Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832, regular meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM for the Madam Edi district, uh, school district. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call of attendance, please.
Director Doan.
Here.
Director Payne, Director Regan, Director Donna here, Director Peterson.
Here.
Director Stout.
Here. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
Moved.
By Director Doan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda items. Moved by Director Peterson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Doan. Any discussion? These are listed in number 14 on the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, presentations. We have recognition and discussion of the Zephyr Learning Showcase and our school board walks. Do you want to start us off?
Sure, I can kick this off. So every time we have a Zephyr Learning Showcase before the meeting and every time we have a Zephyr Learning Showcase, we take a little bit of time to just share what we saw and what we've learned from that. And then this time around also, we have been on three board walks. At this point, we've been to three, three buildings and toured with the principal to see some of the, either the new courses that are being offered or some of the strategies that you've been hearing about or curriculum that you've been hearing about too, so that the things that we've been talking about at the board table, you can see in action. So that was the purpose of the board walks and it's part of the school board goal. So, um, this is just an opportunity to talk a little bit about what you've seen recently and just share with one another. Not everyone can go on every boardwalk, so that's part of this, this conversation as well. So, with that, I don't know if you want to start with Zephyr Learning Showcase tonight or?
Sure, I'll go. Regarding the learning showcase tonight, I thought it was really cool to see all of the exhibits. One that really stood out to me personally was the DECA exhibit. I know we brought that back a couple of years ago. But I feel like we've had so many conversations as a board, like making sure that we're preparing kids for real world experience and based on what they were sharing with me and what I've heard about it, like that is exactly what it is, right? It's giving them prepared for life in a career focused around business. So I thought that was super interesting.
I would add that, uh, what I, with DECA, um, I think, I'm gonna get this wrong, but exponential growth from last year to this year, 60%, something like that, if I remember right. Um, so it just goes to, you know, serving the needs and wants of, of the families and the kids out there. NASA, the NASA Hunch Club, um, I'm just gonna sum it up by saying, one of the students in that group, I think there's 12 members, there's four present today, when he looked, when he was describing what was, what they're doing, the projects that they're working on, he said, "Yeah, when we were talking to NASA." That just sums it up for me right there, as far as what they're doing and it's pretty amazing stuff. And then Community Ed will hear from, so we won't steal that thunder. Um, and then Show Stoppers, which provides the opportunity for kids to go, um, all around the metro and attend plays and musicals, things like that. That's fantastic. Apparently that's, they have a full busload every time, so that's just terrific, so.
Yeah, I just want to add on, on, well, I, thank you for really pointing out everyone who was here tonight because, again, all of these things are aligned with our strategic plan to help students find where their interests are and then help them grow in that. And they're learning, we want them to become lifelong learners, so we want that to evolve into obviously areas where they're, where they have these interests. And I, on the NASA thing, I thought, um, first of all, it's for juniors and seniors and so I think the fact that they have 12 already is amazing and the hope is to embed it in, in, in classroom learning in the upcoming year. This is brand, I mean, this was really the first year they're participating. So I just think the opportunities are, you know, DECA wasn't here a couple of years ago. I just think the way we're moving in the direction of where students' interests are is so important. Um, obviously, this is, we're talking more at the high school because that's when kids are able to make, there's so many clubs and teams and, um, classes of choice there. So, um, and then I'll just go ahead and talk about my high school walk, um, because, oh, well, there were numbers on the high school walk, so I just, um, I think one of the ones that stood out to me, we, we visited a number and I'll let Paul and Ryan jump into, but, uh, one was pottery and I thought that was so great too because I do hear all the time about how these kids love pottery. Um, I think it's a really great place for them to discover something they wouldn't be otherwise exposed to. So, and it's not just sitting in a seat and learning, it really breaks up their day. I think they really, it probably helps their learning throughout the rest of the day because they've had this, um, way to, to learn in a different way. And so, that's, and then I'll talk about, I, I also went to OH and the middle school, but I'll let you guys jump in if you want to about high school.
Um, yeah, so, I guess two things. One, and Barb, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit here. Um, the avid class, what's the purpose of that class again?
It's giving, um, students opportunities to, well, it's giving them opportunities to think about college and career.
Okay.
But it's also teaching them some skills to prepare them to apply for schools, um, apply for career opportunities. And so, um, not just giving the opportunity to explore, but also teaching skills to help support them in that.
And, and if I'm correct, there's kind of like an application process and maybe even like a, a waitlist to get into the class or something to that extent or?
I do not believe there's a waitlist.
There's an application process.
Um, I, I don't need, I think, I, you know, I'd have to.
It was kind of explained to me that way, but my point is, is it was really exciting to see a lot of these students that maybe have thought about it or haven't thought about it, but get really excited about what the next step is. And they were really, you could hear them kind of thinking through like, here's what I liked about this, here's what I didn't like about that and why that matters, right? It was the why that matters part that was really interesting. So that was great to see. Um, and then I, they, they entered a business class was, again, awesome because it was real world examples that they were discussing. And so we happened to catch them discussing, um, kind of the franchise model and how that works and, um, getting exposure into how individuals or companies make money by leveraging a franchise model, I think is a great concept to be introduced at that age. Um, and I'm sure everybody wants to know like what were the franchises they were interested in. Um, it was overwhelmingly Taco Bell and Jersey Mikes. So, that was great.
No, I'll just echo what both Brian and Stacy said, um, but also, um, a little off topic. Uh, so we all got texts recently about, at least at the high school, there's texts going out for being tardy. So, we can relate because when we got there at, when, you know, at the beginning of school, the entryway was full of maybe 30 or 40 kids who were late to school. And I think they're multiple, they're, they weren't first time offenders, so to speak. So, I can appreciate why those texts went out now because I saw firsthand what's happening. So hopefully, you know, those texts can make, help make a difference.
It was while the construction was still really bad, so I'm hoping it's done down.
Yeah.
But that was while the construction was that bad.
So, but no, it's, it's important there.
I don't think we can blame that anymore.
Yeah. We're not gonna let them off. But no, but it was a great, it was a great tour, great tour. Thanks for, for putting that together, so.
And then, let's see, we also, I, I went to the middle school, we'll talk about that. I thought that was great. We did, um, saw another class where avid strategies, I need to look at my notes. Um, it was avid strategy, well, first of all, there's not just avid, there is an avid class, but we also have avid strategy. So, um, for those of you who didn't get to see the middle school, or some of you weren't at the OH, so the avid strategies are also embedded in all the classrooms. So I think, again, I, it was, it's really exciting to see how our students are learning, study habits, executive functioning skills, things like that, but embedded in their learning. So that way, it's, it's, as they continue to grow as a student, um, they just have the tools they need. Um, we haven't always been doing that and I think it's, I think we'll see a lot of success from this. Um, also at the middle school, it was, um, we visited the middle school success class. Um, it, they talk, I think they cover a number of different things. It was, um, bullying prevention week, so they were focused on that issue at the time. Um, but then we also saw the study strategies that are avid strategies, but embedded in, um, like the reading class, or that there's, there's an extra reading class for sixth or seventh grade.
Uh, sixth grade has that extra.
And, and they use the science curriculum so that the students then are better science students because they're learning how to read nonfiction text, text from somebody who's teaching them those skills. So that's in addition to their science class and in addition to their English class. Um, and then, oh, and then in literacy, they, they did a, the way she was teaching settings and, and the stories they were covering, again, we saw the, the strategy being used. And so I think just seeing the strategies being used consistently is really important because, again, the students have to learn how to obviously develop these skills on their own eventually. So, but they, you know, it's good for them to be given the, the direction how to do that, um, at such an early age. Anything else from the middle school? Um, and then OH, I'll just say we do have, we got, we were able to, uh, visit Mr. Murgis, if I say correctly, Murgis, um, uh, uh, class, which was really fun and he'll be here tonight, but we, I think that was a great one. And Jenny, I'll let you talk if you want, but he had a great video on poetry, so we, I think, um, we were all wishing we could watch that video again. As I felt like I was learning as, as I was watching it.
Well, the theme of visiting OH was to see the hands-on and the work that Witten Wisdom is doing that Jen keeps trying to explain to us, the new reading curriculum. And so we did a third grade classroom, a fourth grade classroom and a fifth grade classroom to just see how an eight-year-old does it, a nine-year-old can handle it and how a 10-year-old can handle this. And I needed to see this because I thought, how can an eight-year-old sit through, um, an hour and 50 minutes of literacy? And it's intense. And so we got there and third graders were watching Jacques Cousteau, um, Finding Treasures in the Ocean. So how could you, it was fascinating. Never, the room was quiet, everyone was watching and then they have workbooks that, what did you see, what, um, colors, art, sounds, this. So, uh, fourth grade was poetry with Mr. Murgis and that was, they kept kids going because, um, they are looking for rhymes. Kids love rhyming. Then they did this whole rap video on, on a monopia and just, it kept, it kept the tempo going. It wasn't poetry like you think of poetry. Um, and that was what the video was about, is poetry can be so fun and it doesn't have to rhyme. And then we went to fifth grade and that was just the teacher silently reading to her class of 10-year-olds and not a peep, no one was monkeying around. I just, I, I have a whole philosophy on reading aloud to kids that is really important to me. Um, so to see that kind of made my heart swell that you're not too old to be read to. And some were following, I'm not sure if they had to be following along, but some were just really listening to her and focused on Ms. Ock and some were following along in the book. And is that either way? Okay. Um, so to, in summary, the, in what Witten Wisdom, and we've been told here, but now we got to see it, is that Witten Wisdom isn't just literacy, it's art, it's science, it's vocabulary, it's geography and it's social studies, all in that. So it's broken up, your brain is just having to read for an hour and 50 minutes, the art, the science and the social studies and the geography. So it's a little bit for every kid. Um, they might really pay attention during the geography and then get sucked back in when they start talking about science. So I can see how it keeps you going when you just think they might have hit their limit on literacy for the morning. And last thing is, I like how it's been explained, this is year one, they'll give year two the same try and then year three figure out, okay, that lesson does not need to be that long, but let's stretch out the next lesson. It should be longer, the kids love it, there's so much to learn, but let's scale back this chapter. So it can be played within a few years.
I'm sure, can I just go back? Um, and I know I, I think I speak for the entire board, but, you know, the, these clubs, DECA, NASA, Hunch, um, you know, even the Show Stoppers, you know, it, they wouldn't be here without the leadership that they, that they each have. And so I know, uh, Brian Farmer is with Hunch, um, Ms. Witsen, who's Drew's wife, who brought that idea to Community Ed and got it going. Um, and then I'm gonna forget, I forget, the leader for DECA, Annie Dahl, um, just really appreciate their leadership and, um, making it happen for these kids, so.
Yeah, and I would just echo too, just the teachers' learning. I, I just, I just can't imagine because they, they teach these subjects year after year, but they're constantly, um, improving upon how they're teaching. So to Jenny's point, like the way, so, you know, in a few years, they might be doing it a little differently because they've learned something else that works. And just like all of us doing all of our jobs, right, where you can always do better. And so I think, um, just highlighting too, how much effort the teachers are putting in to ensure that that student learning is happening. So, wanna highlight that too. Oh, okay.
Well, that was a great summary and recap of, um, board walks and several learning showcase. Thanks.
Wildwood left.
We do. So next time, we'll be able to talk about that.
Oh, I have to tell us what's next. Next on the agenda, oh, we have teacher recognition, recognition, Nick Murgis. Now I said it correctly. You could have corrected me before.
I made sure to do the hard G.
Everybody was looking at me but not telling me what I was doing wrong. Um, welcome. And we have Suzie Prather, who's going to, uh, share with us this recognition.
You can stay right here. You get to stay right up here. You are the spotlight. Um, good evening, Superintendent Duffrin, board and the community. I am so excited to recognize one of the best. We have amazing teachers at all of our schools, but it is fun to get to recognize some of our colleagues to show the great work that they're doing. So tonight, um, it was pretty easy to put together a staff recognition and you heard a little bit from the board walk. Um, so Mr. Murgis, um, has been teaching for 10 years. He was a fifth grade teacher in Utah prior to coming to Madam Edi and he's been at OH Anderson for four years now. Um, he has made a difference and one of the things, um, that this board has been part of is kind of that refresh of our strategic plan. And Nick was actually a member of the refresh team and, and he actually lives the strategic plan in a daily basis. So some of the same themes you spoke about from our learner showcase, um, our Zephyr showcase and, um, some of the board walks, you'll see in this presentation. Um, some of the things that Nick does that really aligns with our strategic plan, he helps students pursue their passions. He finds that relevance in learning. He values and respects each person and he really brings those innovative instructional practices. Um, I think Stacy spoke about that, how our teachers are constantly looking at how to engage kids and, and be innovative and change, um, uh, the way that we do things. Joy is always seen in his classroom. He collaborates wonderfully with families in some innovative ways and he's definitely a teacher leader both at OH Anderson and in the district. So I'm gonna show just some examples and I just put some pictures so you can see a little peek into his classroom. I know, um, this morning at our staff meeting, we always start with wows and wonders and one of our colleagues was just like, wow. She knew, uh, Mr. Murgis was doing some of these things, but didn't know to the extent and she's like, I've gotta learn from him, I've gotta hang out with him and learn some things. So if you're in Mr. Murgis's fourth grade class and he has shared this with some of his colleagues, so there's some other colleagues that use this, they have something they call a classroom economy with a mall day. And where students are earning money for doing jobs and they're keeping track of how much money they have and then they get to shop on mall day and they get to start their own businesses, they have business plans, they make money and they spend their money on this mall day. So it is a real life experience of how, how do we manage money, how do we save money? Um, and a fun, engaging place for kids. Um, just one lesson, I was in his classroom last year. Um, if you think about math, you know, sometimes it can be kind of dry. Um, well, I love it and find the real life, sorry, sometimes it is. But he finds ways to show the math, why are we doing this? So on his board, he talks about what the learning target is, why we're learning it. So when they were doing area, um, so they were looking at snow plowing, so they were looking at, um, data and data sets at looking mean, median and mode on how much snow is in different places. But then they use area to kind of find out how much area do we need to snowplow at OH Anderson? And you can see the real life maps, kids are engaged, they're doing these math thinking and it is that real life, the why about why we're doing math.
Fourth grade.
This is fourth grade. Yes, yes. It's awesome.
Visit that.
You can come on the next board walk. Um, technology, Nick is part of our technology lead team at OH Anderson and, and has really shared, um, his excitement and tools with his colleagues. Um, and one of the things that I know, and these are just experiences that I've been in his classroom, so I know he has a whole, uh, slew of other things. I just went through my iPhone and found some pictures, but he does virtual field trips. So in fourth grade, um, we find landforms and geography around the US and see how landforms affect life. Well, the kids don't just read the book, they're actually going on trips to these different landforms and experiencing them in virtual field trips. Um, on the next part of the slide, you'll see some assessments and this is where kids are showing, it's game-like, um, in math. So kids are doing assessments, formative assessments, they're holding up cards and he's scanning them and they're seeing their progress right on the screen, um, practicing their math. So it really is an engaging, happy place to be. Um, he really values individuals. Um, Mr. Murgis knows each student in his class and he knows what they need to succeed. So he does small group, um, instruction, one-on-one instruction, gives feedback on a regular basis. You'll see him moving around his classroom. The second piece is actually a MAF grant, um, that we have. Um, he actually had this from his past. It was microphone balls and the kids actually toss these across and their microphones to really elevate students' voice and to really encourage kids to be sharing. So he shared this idea, um, with some of the colleagues. Actually, we did, we do something called pineapple visits where we go and visit our colleagues and learn from them. Well, the teachers all saw this ball and they're like, wow. And so we did a MAF grant and got that in more classrooms. So he spread, um, a way to share voice. Um, joy is always seen in his class, um, on the left-down syndrome day. Um, we had a little dance party and cake, uh, for that, uh, to celebrate some of our students. And you can see, um, we had an empathy day last year where kids, um, dress up like teachers and teachers dress up like, um, their teacher and you can see all the beards that were there for Mr. Murgis, um, there as well. Um, there's some other joy, um, just actually acting out some of the math. Um, there is a video that I'm not gonna, um, show at this point, but he was the wild teacher of the year last year and there's a little video showing him being celebrated at the wild game. Um, now this is a big piece. We've been talking at OH Anderson, how do we get families connected, see the work that we're doing, um, see the work that you saw on the board walks. So he has started a virtual showcase of learning. And these are just a few examples of what he shares. So he just adds to a slide deck and there's videos, um, there's podcasts that families can see to get a peek into the classroom and why they're doing the things they're doing. So you can see there's a little bit, um, with their collaboration that they're doing as a classroom with morning meetings. There's some of the things about Socratic seminar, how the kids, um, speak and discuss things together. But it really is an informational way to show families a peek into the classroom. And, um, his AI experience, I have to say, we're all, like, he's sharing the AI world with us, but he takes some of this information, puts it in AI and all of a sudden it makes a podcast talking about what's happening in Mr. Murgis's classroom with two people talking and they're real, they sound like real people, they're really not, but they're talking about the facts that are in here. So he's really looking at what are those next steps to bring families in to the learning that's happening. Um, and then at the dinner table, then there can be better discussions with kids about, tell me about X and tell me about Y. And you can check those links out later, I put them in for you as well. Um, and as a teacher leader, uh, Mr. Murgis, um, he's, he was a member, as I said, of our strategic planning, um, committee where we did that refresh, very active, uh, voice and valuable voice to show what are the next steps and where do we want to go as a district. And he really does live that. He is part of our district literacy committee, so, um, as you got to see some of the implementation of some of our new resources, he's been one of those key people, um, working with our teaching and learning department, um, K5, to see how do we implement this? And then how do we monitor and adjust and help and support so that we can have a smooth implementation for that? He's part of our leadership team and our technology team as well and is just an active and, um, important voice at our school. Um, he's done other community outreach. He had organized a Minnesota Wild visit to teach us about healthy habits, um, small group instruction. He is just living our strategic plan. And these are just some of the kids, I have to say, when I went into the lunchroom, um, more kids wanted to share and I said, oh, we can only take four, but this is how the kids describe him. So Jaden, um, a fourth grader said he's a fun teacher and he, in literacy, he just loves to make the posters and do gallery walk to get to see their friends work. Um, Clara, um, she said he makes the class really fun with dad jokes and playing foursquare with us and he's also supportive, um, as well. That's Clara in fourth grade. Um, Lily, a fifth grader that had him last year, said he's fun and a funny teacher and she really liked feeding the birds. There's a bird feeder outside his classroom. And then George said, I like Mr. Murgis because he's kind, fun, respectful and a good teacher. So our kids' voices say it all. And then we have some of our colleagues. So, um, Sydney Sampson is, uh, one of a fourth grade teacher and she said, Mr. Murgis has this way of just lifting up everyone's spirits even on tough days. He brings a positive vibe that energizes the whole team. He's always coming up with new ideas that gets us thinking differently and trying fresh ways to improve our teaching. Plus, he makes learning genuinely fun for kids. And Kelsey Geis is one of our fifth grade teacher and she, um, describes Mr. Murgis as an innovator. He's always looking for clever ways to improve his instruction and that of others. So he's sharing that piece. Um, he shares the great ideas he has with colleagues so that all students at OH Anderson can benefit. Not only does Nick's others-focused mindset make OHA a better place for students to learn, but his positivity, welcoming demeanor and joy for teaching makes our school a better place to work. So that sums it up. We do have a parent quote as well, um, about, uh, the impact that he made on their daughter as well. Um, so at this point, I would like to honor Mr. Murgis and thank him for all the contributions he has made to OH Anderson, to our district and for truly doing what we want everyone to do here is to live our strategic plan and make it become a reality. So I have a certificate for Mr. Murgis.
Have any?
Oh, I, I.
Maybe that you have something she'd want to say before we get up.
Go for it.
I have to. Um, parents will say, oh, um, what do you know about Mr. and Mrs. Sampson? I don't know, or for fourth grade, I don't know, I've only had Nick Murgis for all my kids. So, um, I'm lucky to repeat with him two years. Can I share a story about the school store?
Yeah.
Okay, and it goes with the kid who was just up there, George. Um, you had school store, which they love, and then we saw George out in the community the next day and he's wearing this hat. And my husband said, oh, I have a, I have a hat like that, George. And Monty's face went like this. Monty sold George's, Chris's hat to George at mall day. And George still wears it. It was just great. So, things, things get sold at store day. Um, it's great to run into at wild games, kids, I mean, if we go, we have to go find where you are. You've gotten my kids so into national parks, um, the fourth grade pass, plus you just talking about it, you small group the kids by national parks. I love your small group learning. That has just, I can see that when I'm in there sometimes, that group working just where they need to be in another group, getting a little help and I just love that so much and you've just been great.
So much. It's clear that you've just made a big impact, not just with the students, but with the teachers too. So thank you for your leadership.
That means a lot, yeah. Hearing those comments from teachers, that's.
Yes.
I, I certainly appreciate, um, the outside-the-box approaches that you have, um, because without risk takers, we're not gonna improve, right? And so we need that. And so really appreciate you bringing that, um, to the whole team.
I appreciate that. Yeah, my, um, I just had to say too, uh, my head coach of baseball, when I was in high school, he hired me my first coaching job when I was 19 and his first piece of advice for me was, a good coach is a good thief. And so, you know, it's, even though it's a sharp way of saying that, um, you know, basically, I've been super fortunate to, um, teach and coach and work with so many awesome people and so just taking little pieces everywhere that I've been. And so just taking little pieces everywhere that I've been and it's really benefited myself. So everything that's been on there and that I've done has come from an idea or directly from someone else and just mixing those together. So I feel super fortunate. Going all the way back to middle school, high school, sports, and then now teaching, I've had a lot of people have a huge impact on me. And so I feel pretty blessed to be able to have all those people that have had a positive effect on me, so.
Well, we are very fortunate to have you, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to get a photo with you.
Yeah.
Kate, it's your turn.
We're going to get an update from our community education director.
Hello, thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to give an update on last school year in community ed. So every year I make sure to have this graphic so you know all of the different things that community ed does, things that aren't typical areas that I do a lot of talking about, my English as a second language with our adult basic ed. Sometimes we don't, aren't able to give a lot of our communication, communication and marketing piece. So I'd just like to show that every time. Last year, when I gave my update, Director Donna had a really good question and I made a note of it, so I wanted to highlight and share a little bit about the funding that we receive in community ed. If you look at the pie graph there, only 14% of our $2.8 million budget is actual money that we receive from levies and state aids. Most of our fees then obviously come from our childcare and our preschool programs and of course fees that individuals pay to attend our classes and courses and some of our events. The one place that we get most of our money for the levies is each person within our school district, we receive $5.32. That doesn't go very far, as you know. We will have an increase on that coming up to six, over, a little over $6. So I just wanted to share that because I think it is important for you to know that we don't receive a lot of funding and we are in charge of really offering the great classes and events and our facilities and all of that that our families want and choose to pay Another thing about community ed is we are mandated by state statute to have a community ed advisory council. This is a picture of our council from last year. Our council needs to be made up of a variety of different people. So we have to have city officials, some faith entities, a person from a faith entity, of course, parents, community members. We also have some business and partnerships that we hold. So in this photo, you'll see a variety of people. And then, of course, we have our school board representative, Director Donna, who sits on that right now. So last year, after we did the strategic plan refreshed, community ed had an opportunity to look at different ways that we can support that. And these are some of the additional programming that we did for our secondary students, which is second, or sixth grade, excuse me, to 12th grade. And some of the strategies we were looking at was the strategy about trust and partnership and how we, that's how we looked at our middle school youth event. And I'm going to show you a quick video on that, just so you can see what happened that day. As you can see, there was a lot of fun at that event. It was the first time we had put on a after-school youth event in several years. And we had, we, I know we had over 300 students attend, so that was really great. On the right side of that slide at two, we'll show you, we worked on a schools-out service day for our middle school students. We did a service project and then went to Wild Mountain tubing. We looked at some improv classes, intro to golf, and stock market, personal finance and business. We also, this summer, because we were looking at having real-life experiences for our students and looking at their passions, we partnered with 916 to do a cosmetology camp. That was a hit. So some activities that we were doing also to welcome and engage and partner with our Zephyr community. We had a night at the children's museum. Some of these are for early learning families, but it did go up into the beginning of K and through two. Family nature night, we have conscious discipline nights, the family nature walks. These are all ways that we could bring partners in to provide programming with us and also to engage the community to come out. That was one thing that we really wanted to work on when we saw community ed in the strategic plan. Also, with that refresh, we were doing some discussion at our advisory council, and they had some questions for us that we weren't really able to give a good answer to. So we worked together with the council to come up with a community needs assessment. It looked like we had never done one before, and so we thought this was a good time. We do do evaluations for our classes. We send them out afterwards to get input, but we weren't sure we were maybe asking the right questions to get the right answers. So these are just why we wanted to do the survey. Again, I told you there was no template or model. We wanted to get a bigger picture of the performance of our programs. And then we really thought this would be a good opportunity to get advice or suggestions from our community. The first step was to create the survey itself. We identified seven different objectives there. Accessing our community needs and interests, really understanding what they were looking for, evaluating our current programs, seeing what we were doing well, what things we needed to improve on, identifying barriers to participate. Is it cost? We asked things about that. Is it transportation? Is it location? Those types of things. We assessed the level of performance to measure our excellence. That was a really good key for us. I'll talk about that in the next slide. Identified our community assets, the people that, and partners and business entities that we already are using and how we can leverage more. Tracking the changes over time and then informing our resource allocation based on what we heard. So here's what we heard. We had over 550 responses, and that included staff, families, and we also included our secondary students. So we had responses from them also. 92% of the respondents rated our program excellent or good, which is very, these figures are very similar to what the district here's response is for in the same, not these same questions, obviously, but these percentages. And 93% of our respondents would recommend our program to others. This is a sample of some of the questions or one of the questions that we asked and for one of our programs. And as you can see, 86% who participated rated us excellent or good. But if you look at those percentages, you know, they're both, they're good, right? 35 and 51, but notice, most of that is good. We really are wanting to shoot for excellent, right? So this is letting us know what things we can do to move the dial on that. And then these were some of the feedbacks that we heard based on this particular question, you know? Lots of different things. A lot of things we heard for that secondary was our middle school families, was the opportunity for students to participate in athletic events that aren't necessarily team-based, that they can just try out, and maybe it isn't something that they're going to have a team concept for. So we're looking at being able to try to do that this coming year. After we saw all of the data, we looked and we have to realize, what are we going to do now? How are we going to do this? We have had some changes in my staff this year, which I'll talk about. But we, I did a broad overview of the data with the coordinators last spring. Since then, we have a new crop of coordinators with me. And then we did some quick fixes for the summer, doing some, like I talked about, this cosmetology, the stock market. We also heard loud and clear from our families that middle school families would like more communication, letting us know, you know, letting them know when the deadlines are for registering. So we have worked on doing some Instagram posts, getting them to know our coordinators that work in secondary so they can identify them, doing some more proactive information about those dates, and then increase our marketing of special events. So we've, we worked this past summer to do some new tricks on that, and you'll see some of that. Future use of data, we will be doing some analyzing of the data coming up at a retreat we're going to do. We're looking at doing some, implementing some programming during flex time, looking at partnering and maybe bringing in some speakers about real-life experiences, how to write a resume, what does it look like to do a job interview, those types of things, a quick snippet with those students. So increase our community involvement and then, of course, that real-life learning that we've been talking about. Here is, and then this is a sample of why we wanted to make sure we got open-ended questions or had those in there, because we got really specific answers when you asked that. This particular question talked about that real-world experience, and it gives my coordinators who do that programming and planning, specific things that we can target and go for. So those were some really good ideas that we're looking hopefully to be really implementing more this, this winter, spring, and for sure in the summer. Like you heard me say, we have had some changes with our staff this year, and so we did have a resignation with our communication coordinator in the spring. And so we had an opportunity to bring in a communications intern. Alice, our director of communications, was able to do some supervising and training of her. We worked during the, excuse me, during the internship, Olivia managed all of our social media, she worked on webpage updates, and she was making sure to give me some data analytics on what was working and what wasn't working. And as you can see on the bottom there, we did a lot of growth. We were pretty stagnant, and so we did, we tried out a lot of new things this year. And so we, we increased our reach in Instagram over 3,000%. That was incredible. Same thing with Facebook, and we also had quite a bit of new followers.
I think part of this is because of how many times I watched that T-ball video that she made. I do, I think I contributed to that.
Thank you.
But she's the one that made that T-ball video, if you remember that one. Go on.
She did a great job. She really did. We were, we were very lucky to have her, and I think it was a really good opportunity for us to springboard off what we were going to need to look for, for our next person to take over our communications department in community ed. And with that, I'm going to let you welcome our new community education staff here. Angie Lundblad is our early childhood supervisor. She started last spring. Adam, you'll see out and about taking photos and at a lot of different events. He started right after Labor Day. Kylie Nyman is our new administrative assistant. She also sits at the front here. She'll greet you when you come in for a meeting or stopping in for something. And then Sammy Wallace is our new secondary and adults coordinator, and she started the end of August. So we've had a lot of transition, but a lot of really great things are happening. Can we play that real quick? This is a little snippet of our staff so you can see some of our Instagram so we can promote. a lot of community members as well as meta, I learned that word this summer a lot, thanks, Alice, really likes that. So I will tell you about some upcoming events and activities. I always like to invite you to certain things. I will tell you, I didn't write on here, but on Thursday is National Community Ed Day. So we will be sending out some postcards to certain people for, so, for being high participants in our classes. So watch for that. Our community lunch is December 9th. We'd love to have any of you attend if you're able. Social security, timing is everything. Maybe some of us are lucky and we'll be able to start utilizing that in the near future. That's December 10th. We have a family literacy night. Nordic ski is a new option that we're offering to our secondary students, and we already have like 17 or 18 students signed up for that. That'll begin right after the new year. And then, of course, Ashland Theater. Jamie, our youth enrichment coordinator, is putting that on, that will be in March. We are currently finalizing our winter-spring catalog until mid-December. You'll see the, that come to your homes as well as the online link. We're excited about that. Yes?
Explain family literacy night, please.
So that is for our younger students. And what it is, I believe, is they're going to be looking at the new, some of our new curriculum that we're using in early learning and having families come in and work on some of that and learn some of that. Good question. And that is all I have for you. Thank you for engaging with community ed. We wouldn't be here if our families didn't choose us, and we know there's lots of options out there, but we're super grateful that we can provide wonderful programs for families here. Do you have any questions?
I was just, Kate, I was just going to say that the, the survey was really interesting, right? And you got a lot of good feedback, a lot of good information that you're going to take from that and put into action as needed. So I, and when I saw the, the number of people who participated, that struck me as relatively high for a, a survey, so.
Yeah, we were ve, we are very lucky. Monomidae families are in the community, are really, they're really, they want, they know we value their opinion. One of the things that we continue to keep trying to say when we're putting out information is, you shared, we listened. It's like our little tagline, so that people understand that when you give us that feedback, we are going to try to provide the programming that we can, that you want.
Yeah, that's an important point, right? People would just, they wouldn't give it a second thought if they didn't think that you were... a second thought if they didn't think that you were listening and, and thinking about their feedback, so.
Right. Thank you.
Back to the financing and the funding. Last year, we approved, community ed was going to bump up if you wanted to rent a field or rent a gym space, correct?
Correct.
Was that starting this school year?
That started July first.
Oh, and is, do you come back and do a financial thing for us if that?
If you would like me to give you some data. No, I'd be happy to do that. I will say that, you know, costs have continued to go up. So, yep. Yeah, that is one thing that we just continually keep working on. It, our, our, all of our athletic associations were super supportive. They, they were, you know, they've worked with us. Again, I think last year I talked about how they partner with us, and, you know, the baseball association, association had partnered with us and did sixty-five, sixty-nine thousand dollars of renovations on things they want to see. And all of our associations keep coming back and, and helping when they can. So we're super appreciative of that.
Yeah, so Kate, I just wanted to comment, probably stole my thunder, a touch there on the survey, but I think it's, like, you're doing a great job, and, and the group is doing a great job. But I really love how you proactively were seeking feedback from the community, and that there's an acknowledgement that, yeah, things are going pretty good, but there's an opportunity to improve on that. So I love the, the aspiration to continue to get better there. One quick question, though, and seeing the video for the Let's Glow Zephyrs piece, has there been any consideration to bringing back middle school dances at any point?
Well, that was kind of our, that was part of the, the event, right? We had a DJ, but we also had to have, you know, other things to do with that many students. Are you wanting to chaperone one of those, Brian?
I would absolutely participate, but I'm just curious, like, what's, no, I don't think my daughter would be very excited about that, but I'll, I'll participate certainly. What's the hesitation? Is it financial? Is it participation rates? Like, what are your thoughts on that?
I think, so one of the things that we talked about doing that is somewhat similar to that, I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we talked about the possibility of doing something called the fifth quarter, which would be like after a football game and have like a dance, right? The kids are all right there. We pull them into the middle school, have that opportunity to do that. I think we're just getting a little hesitation because, how do I say this? Staff, the, the requirements they have of evening things gets to be a lot, right? In our, in our program, because we do have things on the weekends and on the evenings. I think now that we have some new staff too, that, you know, they, they're wanting to try new things, that that might be something. And if you wrote a dance on here, Ryan, I'd be happy to bring it back.
Well, that's what I get for speaking up, of course, but I'm sure I could help bring in volunteers to participate.
We would love to do things that our stu, that's, that's what we're, that's the, the mission of my program, right, is to do things that engage students. And it is so important in that middle school age, really, to be able to bring the students in and have a variety of things. I mean, we even thought about, we needed to have like a quiet area for our students where some of the, this, it was overstimulating for them, right? So we had like a quieter area in the cafeteria for that, where they could have snacks and those kinds of things. But I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, of course.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much. As always, I have to compliment you and your team. And every year I talk about how you came in during COVID, and you've just done a phenomenal job year after year. It just is so impressive. So thank you for all your work, and thanks to you.
I always, yes, I always appreciate that. My team is great, right? It's been wonderful. So thank you.
Okay, now our student representative.
Well, I'm back up again. Give me one second. It seems like I just saw you guys two weeks ago. There's been a couple of big things that have gone on. Girls soccer won their state championship, three to oh against the Holy Angels. Really fun game, even though I don't think they had a chance going in. So I was pretty confident there. Also, we had the election, we ran mock elections. Most of these schools had some sort of that. The high school had a full-on election that was put on. They brought kids down from all their history classes, tallied votes, just like in real life. Wildwood had an election, but it was for the name of their pet fish. It's, it's kind of similar, but it's, it's a little different. And it looks like OH had an election, but it was for a special day that would happen later this month. The choices were stuffy day, which is you bring your stuffed animal in, hat day, and dress in a costume day. And stuffy day was victorious. So I guess they're bringing some stuff in later this month. And on the election day, OHA had anything but a backpack day, which I don't know if you have kids or know what that is, but it's basically, instead of a backpack, you bring anything else. I know kids in the high school had bicycles, coolers, shopping carts. We're going to be a little more strict on that next year, because I think somebody brought their little sibling. I, we, we gotta crack down on that in the high school a little, but it was great at OHA. Third graders in their classrooms, something I saw in the E news that I thought was interesting, are learning about camouflage and how it's a defense mechanism for animals. I remember learning about this a while back about adapting and evolution. It's, it's a lot to cover. I'm not going to go super into detail with it here. OHA and Wildwood, they actually had that movie and popcorn day that they got from the Fun Run, so that was really great. They had a lot of popcorn. I believe that was on Halloween or close to it, which makes the day even better. Students at the middle school for Veterans Day actually compiled a list of every one of the students, veterans that were related to them, put them on, put what brands they're on, and posted them on the windows of the media center, which is really cool to honor all the veterans that have served. Now, things that we're looking up to. Fourth and fifth grade actually has a spelling bee coming up here, but you have to sign up by November fifteenth. So I guess that's a hard deadline, but that would be really fun to watch. There's also a family movie night at OHA on November fifteenth, which is this Friday for Despicable Me Four. I might have to show up. I haven't seen that one yet, and I have seen the other three. The doors open at five forty-five, and the movie's starting at six oh five. Also, AP exams have to be paid for by tomorrow. I just paid for mine yesterday, so I'm, I'm good. And the Student Council Turkey Bingo is coming up here for Thanksgiving. If you don't know what that is, it's a school-wide event of bingo, where at the beginning of the day, each first-hour teacher is given bingo cards, and every student gets one card. And throughout the day, after every period, at the end, they call a couple numbers, and if you win, you come down to the office and get a prize. I remember we started it last year, and it was a massive hit, so I'm really looking forward to that. Otherwise, it hasn't been too much, since it's only been about half the time as usual. I'm signing out.
Always great report. Hey, now our superintendent report.
It's tough to always ball Max, isn't it?
No, it really is. Just trying to distract you with my pictures. That is entertaining. Okay. Okay, just some things that have happened. Again, only been a couple weeks, so there are just a few things around the district, some awards and noteworthy news and upcoming events. So OHA also had a veterans event, and this is just a really fun, it's a really fun event where students bring in a family member, a neighbor, a friend to introduce. And, and as part of the program, they also learn a little bit about, about the, about Veterans Day. This year's speaker, featured speaker was Mr. Brisky, the principal of Wildwood and also a veteran. And so it's just a, it's a great event. They, they hear, they introduce their special veteran. They, they learn a little bit about Veterans Day. They sing fifty nifty United, nifty fifty, fifty nifty, whatever it may be. And they, they really enjoy that as well. So it's, it's just so, it's a wonderful event. And so you have a few of those pictures there. You've already talked about boardwalks, but I'll just mention that it is here in my, in the superintendent's report. So this always gets sent down, and so it's just an opportunity for people to see some of the pictures of the board going and engaging in our schools. Also, our student cabinet continues to meet. I have this most recent one discussing the strengths and areas of growth for, for related to climate and culture and academics, personal belonging, spirit and pride. So those were our topics. And students went out, got some feedback from their peers, and we started our conversation there. You, have you seen this in your mailbox? Has everyone received? You have one right here, too, a copy of the most recent globe. So I hope you'll take some time to, you as board members will recognize a lot that is in there because you've heard about it here at the board table. Nonetheless, it's a, it's a great publication. Lots goes into it from our communications department. Our communications department have won. So Max already mentioned, our girls soccer team won the, the state title. It's their eleventh state title, which is a state record. Here, if you haven't seen it on social media, you can see it and hear the, a video of the champions, the walk of the champions through OHA and through Wildwood, which is always a really fun, fun event. Kids love it, both the, the students, the soccer team, and the, the students who get to hold up their signs and get very excited to have them walk through the halls. Our volleyball team finished fifth place at state tournament. They, they lost their first match to the eventual winners of the whole thing. So, you know, the fifth place might, had they met them at a different time, it may have been a little bit higher, but they played very well. And we do have, I did go to the swim meet, the section meet. We have eleven athletes that are heading to the state meet. So it was, it was pretty exciting. You heard about the Zephyr Service Project. I mentioned it last time. This is something we did last year, where every building has a, an area that they're focused on for collecting gifts for this project. I think, and I mentioned last time that DECA is involved in it this year. I'll just highlight this a little bit more, though. They, so last time, it was just kind of coordinated. Each building took, took the lead, took part of the project. This time, DECA is taking more of a lead, including the project management of this. They designed the logo for the Zephyr Service Project. You see here, in the first picture, we have some DECA students who are out at the elementary. They're going to each of the schools to talk about the importance of service. In here, they were making posters with Wildwood, but the others are going to be talking to students about the importance of service. And they did want to add business partnerships this time. So last year, we learned that families had a need for hats, gloves, and socks. And so DECA decided to make this an opportunity for business partnerships, and that's what they've asked the business to advertise as part of the collection. So it's expanded a little bit. And again, another opportunity for students to take lead and to practice some, some real-world school skills again with that project management, and then the advertising of the, the project. You heard about community ed, but we, I think it was at our last meet, at the same time as our last meeting, Monamidai was happening. So that's always a, a nice community event, a common book read for the whole community, and a new opportunity for the community women who walk. It's free, nine to ten AM on Thursdays. Academic awards, I think I, I may have talked about it last year, the last time we were here to say that it was coming up. But you, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at those academic awards programs, what's nice about it is each student submits something about a teacher or a class, an experience they've had that has really helped them as a student and helped them grow. And it's, it's, it's fun to see the variety of teachers and classes that are recognized by students and, and what it is that they value. Because I think you'll see in there a lot that goes along with the lifelong learning theme that you were talking about. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look, please do. And know that this awards, I know Director Donna was there, this awards breakfast was really highly attended. We had to go get more tables. So this was a really great turnout for this one. So how many of you have heard Ada Thompson sing? She's absolutely amazing. So at some point, you need to hear Ada Thompson sing. And so she was selected for the National Honor Choir, and it's a real, this is a really huge achievement. I don't know of anyone who's been, who was selected for the, the American Choral Directors Association mixed honor choir since I've been here. I think it's, it's not, certainly not common. So this is, this is a huge award, or a huge recognition for her. So, and completely well-deserved if you've ever heard her sing. So congratulations.
Went to this Adams family. She was Morticia.
We had some nine sixteen students of the month. This is, it's not that we have a Monamidai student every month, but this, this month, we happen to have two. So that was wonderful. Congratulations to those students. We also had, we were featured in an article about AI in the White Bear Press recently. And so if you want to take a number of, of districts, we're interviewed for this. And then just some upcoming events, I'll just highlight Midsummer's Night Stream, Midsummer Night Stream that's coming up, starting November fifteenth. It's the fall play. And that's all I have?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
All right.
Great, thank you. All right, now for our action items. We will begin with approval of donations or grants for October twenty twenty-four totaling eighteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Domon. I'll second, seconded by Director Stout. Any discussion? All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district, and they are used towards the wishes of the donors. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of policies. This is the final.
Did you, are we going back to the board member calendar?
Oh, you're right. I skipped one. Thank you.
Only because I happen to have something to say.
Um, yes, before moving on.
Not.
Good catch. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, let's take a look at the board member calendar. So now we're back on item ten A, board member calendar. Would anyone like to point something out? Yes, Director Peterson.
I really have to put a plug in for Tuesday, November nineteenth, the MSBA Zoom Coffee and Conversation. Da-da, the topic is open enrollment, and it's usually not pre-planned. It's just organically, whatever comes up, people get to talk and chat for an hour. However, at the end of the last one, two weeks ago, that came up, and they've decided to just, there's so much interest, so much confusion. So many people wanted to talk, and it hits nine o'clock, and they cut it off at nine, so people can go to work or do what they want. But they have decided to pick it up again. And since that comes up in our district.
What's the date and time of that again?
Tuesday, November nineteenth, and it's all, it's from eight to nine. And you, do you get the invites in your inbox? Yep, just click the link Tuesday morning.
Any other items to point out? Okay, then we will move back to action items. Eleven B, approval of policies. And this is our final reading.
This is our final reading. And so there are no changes on most of these policies, actually, since the first reading. But the one that I did update based on the last conversation was eight oh six. We specifically were trying to work on an introduction to section four. And I did consult, one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to follow MSBA policy, because as they're updated, then if we stick with MSBA policy as they're updated, we don't miss updates. So that's the typically why we stick with MSBA. However, there's just some language in here that we wanted to kind of clarify, and so that we wanted to put a little preamble in here. We didn't want to remove the language all the way, because in the future, you know, we, then we'd want to be able to just keep track of it, I guess. So if you look at section four, I did ask our attorney, like, what would be the best way to kind of clarify what it is we mean by this? Even though we are acknowledging that there is statute, we also want to acknowledge that we're not going to be doing active shooter simulations or any of these, what's, what's below. So anyway, what you have there is an acknowledgement that this, this is new statute, which includes active shooter drills and active shooter simulations, but it kind of captures what it is we do. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but... So it's essentially what we've talked about. So it's essentially what we've talked about. It just gives a little more specificity to what, about the statute and why, why this exists in our policy right now. So with that, I'll bring all of these forward for final approval based on this being the final reading.
I know, or this doesn't include number two?
It's all, so all of the policies under, so we have 11B, Approval of Policies Final Reading. And the reason it's separated into 11B1 and 11B2 is, although this is the final reading for all of them, 11B2 is one that's an annual review policy. So it's set aside just to make it clear that some of them are due to legislative updates, and this one's an annual review.
But we can pass them all together. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve all of the policies listed?
I'll make that motion.
By Director Donna?
Second.
Question? Okay, this is our third reading, so I feel like we've discussed everything we need to. All right, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, Approval of Resolution Canvassing Return of Votes of the School District.
So we had an election recently, and we have three board members who have been elected. Stacy Stout and Kelly Regan re-elected, and Drew Whitson is our newest member. And so this resolution is what we need to do to canvass the, the votes of the general election regarding our school board election. So the board needs to take action.
I will ask for a motion to approve the resolution canvassing return of votes of the school district general election and authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election duties. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Director Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Donna. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome Drew Whitson, who has been with us for many meetings this year. We, you've been, you're a regular, so you'll get to join us up here very soon.
Right in.
And then we will do an official, we will officially welcome you in January.
Congrats.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve resolution relating to authorizing the state's safe routes to school application.
So I'll, if you, I'll give an intro, and then if there are any questions, Kate can answer them. We brought this resolution to you last year, we, in order to submit a grant to get, it's a construction grant, an infrastructure grant.
Infrastructure grant, correct.
To be able to build a sidewalk that goes from Stillwater Road up along the entrance, along the middle school entrance, where the light is and going up along, okay, alongside the road. So it will actually kind of complete that route to safe route to school because there'll be the, there'll be the bike and walk path on both the north and south sides of Stillwater Road. And then at the light, there'll be this walkway going into our campus. And so Kate put together the application last year, and we, we submitted the resolution for that last year. We did not get the grant, but we're going to resubmit and try again. And so. There is a cost related to, in order to get this grant, we are responsible for the soft costs, which is the engineering and design, I think.
Yep, engineer and planning. And that is, sure, sure. So, right, the resolution is that you would approve the district to, to pay for those soft costs. We are estimating that to be around $35,000, $40,000 because of the increase from one year to the next, right? We applied, we sent a letter of intent to Mindot, who is in charge of this infrastructure grant, and they sent it back to us saying, yes, it looks like you would have a successful chance of receiving this grant. We have to do a proposed cost for it. It was about $150,000 is what we are going to apply for. Because of costs, it's probably a little bit, we're estimating a little bit more than what it, it actually could be. So we are not able to apply for the grant if we don't have approval to have the district pay for part of those soft costs because the grant does not pay for that.
Moved by Director Domann.
Second.
Thank you.
I would just like to say I wholeheartedly support this. I think that's, we have a lot of teenagers driving in at that, in cars going in, and we have a lot of bikers going in, and there's not really a safe space for them. So I really appreciate you working at this to get this. I think especially now with that improved path, we'll have even more bikers and we'll still have teenagers driving, or even parents who have kids yelling in the backseat of the car and distracted. It's just, it's just a little bit. It'll be really nice when we can get that all set up. So yes. Yes, Director Donna.
Oh, Kate. Can local legislators help?
So.
Our success for this grant?
That is not something that we've ever, that they've mentioned, that that would be an incentive for them to approve it. We do have to have county support, and they are actually our fiscal agent. One of the suggestions that came back to myself and Madeline from the county was that are we looking, could we do a partnership with it? And so Maddie at the county is looking into that to make sure that our, both of our requests isn't over the $500,000 mark and how that would look. It would, it sounds like it would give us more points if we're saying that we're doing this project together along with the project they're doing. So we're working on that. It's kind of behind the scenes type of thing, but.
Just an idea. I think so, I'm sure we have, we would have support from our local legislators for what that's worth. I think if it's not for this grant, at least to elevate the need to them because if we don't get the grant, perhaps they can also bring it up in session this summer or this spring. So.
That's a good suggestion. Yeah, good suggestion. Thank you.
And dual-track it.
Great. Thanks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Excellent. Now we are on to our committee reports. We'll start with.
I can do AMSD. So at our most recent meeting, we heard from the Commissioner Brown from the Minnesota Department of Children, Youth and Families, just about. That's a newer department, and so just a little bit about how they've organized and just some overview. And then we actually heard from a few superintendents about working on their portrait of graduate. So that was, it's not, we're not the only ones talking about it. And in fact, there was conversation about, should there be a statewide portrait of a graduate? And that's where everyone said, no, no. So let's not do that. Let's just stick with our locals. So, but everyone just, and each district that spoke had a really different way of talking about it. And only one, actually only Dinah shared that they really call it their portrait of graduate. Others talk about it as foundational learner. I can't remember, it's not skills. I'm sorry, I can't remember the words for it. But, but just know that we're not the only district that is working on their portrait and talking about how important it is for our students as well. So that was part, an interesting part of AMSD. MAFE did not meet again since last report.
MSBA, oh, but I do want to point out, I knew there were, we did receive an email just reminding us that it is Fall Fund Drive for the, for MAFE. And I did contribute today, so that was a good reminder for me. So I'll just highlight it in case you all haven't seen the email yet. So. And then MSBA. Any, nothing? Okay, that makes sense. Metro 916, we have notes, I think, or?
I don't, I don't know if we have notes.
No, okay. They maybe haven't met.
They may not have met yet.
Okay, any other board reports? Okay, I will share curriculum committee. The Curriculum Advisory Committee met on November 4th. The group heard about two new courses for the high school that are being proposed. I think this is very exciting. They're looking at Introduction to Computer Science and Introduction to Data Science. So at the high school right now, we have, there's engineering programs and there's, there's usually an AP, AP Computer Science, and then there's digital electronics. And so we felt like, I think the, the curriculum committee and parents have weighed in for a number, a couple of years now, saying we really need more of a, it's some more classes around computer science before kids just jump right into AP Computer Science. So I'm hoping that these will work out, and I think they're, they're on their way to doing that. In addition to that, the group learned about a grant that Matamidi has recently been awarded for improving computer science experiences for students. That is a K-12 grant. So I think we'll start seeing that, that start to take place in all the grade levels. And that'll help us lead up to our students being more engaged in computer science once they get to high school. So. All right, any, any others? Nope. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
By Director Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Domann. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.